All right, we're ready. The Village of Lincoln Heights Special Council Meeting is now in session. Today's date is Monday, December 2nd, 2024. The time is now 6:43. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. No response. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Present.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Present.
Councilwoman Tanya Key. No response. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Present.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Present.
We have five who are present, two who are absent. We do have a quorum. And for the record, Mayor, I just want to make it known that Councilwoman Tanya Key did call, uh, send an email, excuse me, stating that she will not be in due to illness. And also, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber said that she will not be in due to illness for tonight's meeting.
May we all bow our heads before the Almighty, the One who sits up high and looks down low on what we're doing. Father God, I come to you asking you for your mercy and your kindness. Just wrap your arms around us tonight as we go about doing your business. We are going to decrease so that you can increase. And what comes out of our mouths are pleasing to you. Thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for what you're doing. And thank you for what you are about to do tonight. In your precious name, the Almighty, I say amen and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Lord of the legions.
The Lord of the legions, good to life, for the United States of America.
And to the Republic of the British Commons.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen Hinkston, would you join me up here at the podium? So I do just want to note on the record, at approximately 6:15 this evening, I did formally swear in Ms. Hinkston pursuant to Article 9, Section 9.01 of the Charter, so that we could properly have her sit. However, this is a wonderful moment, especially for somebody who is a first-time council member. So we always like them to have the opportunity to do it in public, on TV, invite their family and friends in, because you're about to embark on the hardest unpaid job you have ever encountered. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe their provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the Village of Lincoln Heights.
Of the Village of Lincoln Heights.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
I'm about to.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can she still stay there? Can she get pictures?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, she looked just like.
She does, but like.
Yeah, Ms. Mounia, make sure you take a picture.
I would just like to say this is the second hardest job. Being a mom is the first job that is unpaid.
That's right. Uh, let's give her a hand clap again, everybody. Congratulations. Okay, all right. Well, it's time to get to work. All right. Okay. So, um, we're at our consent agenda. And so, um, is there a motion to approve the various items on the consent agenda listed in your packet?
You need a motion, uh, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there ayes over here?
Aye.
Okay, all right. An aye also. Okay.
I have a question, ma'am.
Is there any oppose? There are none oppose? All ayes have it.
I have a question, Mr. Desai. Should we have at least read the titles of the resolutions? Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's, that's gone big chunk. Is it, um, is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause that's set forth in the relevant sections of the legislation on the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the emergency clause. Second.
It's been moved in second. Let's give me the roll call. Oh, okay. Voice, voice, voice vote will do. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we need to hear those ayes.
Okay, and I, I hear. Okay, that's five ayes. All right. Any oppose? None oppose? That took a big chunk off of the agenda. We had 10 lit resolutions. All right, we'll go straight into the old business. We have the third reading of Resolution 2024-R-73, authorizing the interim village manager to sell certain real estate, that being 923 Van Buren.
She gonna read it?
Yeah, just a reminder, counsel, since this is old business, we do not need a motion for title. It automatically defaults to a reading by title. We only need a motion if somebody wants it to be read in its entirety.
Read.
I'm sorry. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2024-R-73, Resolution authorizing the interim village manager to sell certain real estate.
Since this is the third reading, I move, uh, to receive a passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call.
Talk up.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Done.
Done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It has passed. All right.
This is a happy night.
Yes. The next is second reading of Resolution 2024-R-80, authorizing interim manager to sell certain property for real estate, that being 1242 Adams.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2024-R-80, Resolution authorizing the interim village manager to sell certain real estate.
Motion to suspend rules.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second. Roll call.
Laverne, can you speak up, please?
Yes, please. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive a passage.
Second. It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion in order for the second reading of Resolution 2024-R-85, authorizing interim village manager to sell certain real estate, that being 1011 Matthews Drive.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2024-R-85, Resolution authorizing the interim village manager to sell certain real estate.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Uh, a motion to receive a passage.
Second.
Been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion for the emergency clause.
Second. It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next in your package is going to be the new business legislation. First reading of ordinance number 2024-05, ordinance amending section 38.065 of the Rules of Council regarding abs, what's that? Abstentions, abstentions. Yes, you can speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I would just wanted to comment briefly on this, um, uh, request. It was requested, as you can see in the top left, by Councilmember Nona Calhoun Mumia. So, one of the things I wanted to draw your attention to was on the last page where you have the rule as it currently reads printed. If you go down to the parenthetical at the bottom that's in bold-faced type, you can see that this, uh, rule was amended in 2008. So it was amended approximately 16 years ago. The history of this is that, um, council members, um, are allowed to abstain from voting on an item. This is different than recusing yourself, okay? So, for example, um, Ms. Key had asked whether or not she should, and I'm kind of paraphrasing this, but whether she should vote on things affecting the Finance Department because her husband is the Finance Director. The answer to that is, if it's just a simple thing of transferring money so that Mr. Key can pay bills, that's fine, you can vote on that. If it were a piece of legislation, uh, for example, giving Mr. Key a raise, Ms. Key would have to recuse herself from that. And the reason is because there's an obvious self-interest in your spouse making more money. So, recusal is when we have a conflict of interest, right? Because we have a personal stake in the matter. And abstention is a different mechanism. Abstention is not recusal. Abstention is the individual does not want to vote yes or no. The way this rule was originally written, and I'm again referring to the rule that is attached to section 38.065, duty to vote, to your, uh, copy of the legislation, it was written under what's referred to as the English Rule, all right? So we inherited much of our law and much of what you see going around this table, parliamentary procedure from England. In England, if a member abstains, or at least what's called the English Rule, if a member abstains from voting, that abstention is not a nullity. It goes with the majority. So let's say you had three people voting in favor of a piece of legislation, two people voting against a piece of legislation, and then two abstentions. Well, under the English Rule, the two abstentions would go with the three voting in favor. So now the legislation is passed. Or vice versa. If you had two voting in favor, three voting against, and then you had two abstaining, the two would go with the vote for no. The concern that was expressed to me, and I am going from memory because this was 16 years ago, but the concern that was expressed to me 16 years ago was that that automatically gives the majority an extra vote. We would like to just have it not count at all. So in 2008, it was modified. And if you will read about in the middle of the rule, section 38.65, duty to vote, where it says, "Provided however, that any member may affirmatively state when called upon to vote that he or she abstains, and the abstention shall not be deemed an acquiescence in the action taken by the majority voting." So in 2008, we put that language in to say that it no longer followed under the English Rule, fell under the English Rule. In other words, it was not going to be used, uh, to increase the vote of the majority. The American Rule is the opposite. The American Rule is that, um, it's a nullity, and that's what we adopted. Ms. Calhoun Mumia, um, called me expressing concerns about, um, that rule. I'm not sure, and I'll let her speak to it if she cares to, as to her, her specific concerns, but one of the things that has happened, pardon me, is that people sometimes just then, rather than voting, abstain so that they don't have to say whether they're for something or against something. And then, when we are now following the American Rule, where the abstention doesn't go with the majority, it leads to situations where we just have an incomplete vote. And we don't have a decision made about, uh, a piece of legislation as to whether it passed or it didn't pass. It just was never fully voted on. So that is one of the situations. I'm not going to describe it as a problem, but that is one of the situations that has occurred, where we get members now under our American Rule abstaining because it doesn't go either way. And Ms. Calhoun Mumia, did you want to comment about why you wanted to go back to the English Rule and have it count with the majority?
Yes. I, one of the, I was hearing that situation go, which, with, um, the abstentions, I felt left it that people just weren't voting because they just didn't want to vote on the issue. And, um, and I felt that it's a duty of a council member to vote either yes or no on, um, the legislation. And so I, I spoke with, uh, the solicitor to find out exactly if there's some way we could, um, put it in to our, um, Rules of Council that a person, unless there is a reason for, um, conflict of interest, would, um, would either vote yes or no. And, uh, unless there's an, like I said, a, a reason for the abstention or conflict of interest, that they would, um, uh, be, would not be able to abstain.
And so, if you will now go to the legislation on the first page there, you'll see in section one, the rule has been reprinted, but then the part that I'd read previously about, "Provided however, that any member, basically wanting to abstain, can," you will see that that part has been taken out, saying that it does not count with the majority. So if council were to pass this, um, it would go back to the English Rule. And if somebody abstained, their abstention vote would go with the majority, whether that be yes or no.
Okay. Okay. So does she read it?
So now we do have new business. Um, there, it's going to be read by its entirety unless somebody wants the motion to read it by title only.
I move to have it read by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second to read by title only. Roll call.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, ordinance number 2024-0-5, ordinance amending section 38.065 of the Rules of Council regarding abstentions.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Is there any questions? Okay. You made a motion to, um.
Laverne, uh, made a motion, I second it.
Okay, all right. It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive a passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to adopt.
There's no emergency.
No emergency clause on it.
Yeah, just for the record, so pursuant to, um, uh, Chapter 38, Section 38.002 of the Rules of Council, um, once something is amended, uh, it goes into effect immediately.
Okay, that's the ordinance, okay.
That's the law.
Okay. Next is the first reading of Resolution 2024-R-88, authorizing the interim manager to sell certain real estate, that being 1100 Matthews Drive. It's a pleasure, counsel.
One minute, I'm catching up.
Okay.
11 what?
1100 Matthews Drive. Also in your packet in the back is a copy of the property listed and address also again included.
Okay, I see. It's out of, out of order. First reading there? Okay, got it. This is the first reading?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to read by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second to read by title only.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to suspend.
Need to read it first.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2024-R-88, Resolution authorizing the interim village manager to sell certain real estate.
Any questions? There are no questions?
Motion to suspend. Motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's a second. It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
Motion received for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell. Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
We need the emergency clause on that.
Yes.
Uh, motion for the emergency clause.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass.
First reading of Resolution 2024-R-93, authorizing the interim village manager to sell certain property, that being 1179 Jackson. Also, a copy of the property is listed in your packet, attached to the resolution.
Now, do we have a, I guess, somewhere along the way, we have a contract, the purchase agreement. It's not attached.
Yeah, so this, um, this project here is going to be part of a larger project. So, uh, we'll be coming back to council and we'll have contracts for the larger project. But the contract is going to be essentially what we use for all of our purchase, that you, uh, buy at a fair market value, you, um, build within, I think it's two years, whatever the timeframe is, and, uh, otherwise, the property comes back to the village. And so the way the legislation is styled is that, uh, purchase agreement shall be put together by the Law Director, um, in consultation with the manager and, uh, be following those parameters. And there are three specific things set out in there, uh, with regard to building and, uh, the timeframe that I just mentioned.
Thank you. Do we need a, uh, first reading?
She can't hear you.
I'm talking to you.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm waiting.
Motion to read by title only.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second to read by title only.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lynda Childs-Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five ayes votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number 2024-R-93, Resolution authorizing the interim village manager to sell certain real estate.
Any questions?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Ms. Councilwoman Hinkston. Okay, Ms. Hinkston.
The council.
All right, it's been moved.
Get into the swing of things.
It's been moved in second.
By who?
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston, second the mo- motion.
Put on the TV.
All right.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive a passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Was that, uh, Nona?
Yes. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second. It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five aye votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you for answering prayers. Okay, so, uh, where's my sheet? Okay. I want to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
It's been moved in second to go on executive session. Roll call.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Mumia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Karen Hinkston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
There are, there are five aye votes. The motion does pass.
Are we inviting anyone in?
Yes, uh, we'll invite the interim manager.
Okay. You invited, come in.
A voice? Can we get a voice, uh, vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Okay.
All right. Uh, would you explain to some that may not have been here before what we're doing? Well, I mean, uh, what's, we're gonna leave and come back? Explain that. Uh, Ms. DeSai, you want to explain to them?
Sure. Um, so, under the Ohio Open Meetings Act, a public body meets in public so that the public can hear the business of the public. Um, however, there are certain exceptions to that where the public body is allowed to go behind closed doors to discuss things. And one of those exceptions is with regard to a lawsuit that's been filed. So, we have a lawsuit that's been filed, and so, we're gonna go talk about the lawsuit. When we're done, we'll come back in and reopen, uh, the council meeting. However, I don't think there's anything left on the agenda other than to adjourn.